Good evening, welcome to the December meeting of the city. Our first order of business tonight is to ask Lewis to give our indication.
Most gracious and kind, loving Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity to conduct business for the City of Hamlet. We would ask for your guidance, your direction. And Lord, we thank you most of all for this time of the year that you sent your son to die on a cross and to be born at this time of year. And that's what we're celebrating, Lord, is his birth. And Lord, we thank you for each one that's here. We would pray that you would guide us in all that we do, make correct decisions, good decisions, and we'll give you the praise, honor, and glory for it all.
Amen. Do you have before you the agenda for tonight? Are there changes, additions, or deletions that may need to be made to it at this time? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
So much.
I got a motion. A second from Mr. Lewis. Motion from... Okay.
I don't think that's solid yet.
Oh, that to include the closed session? Okay.
No, the motion needs to be to accept the agenda, but we need to put an item on to approve those closed session meetings from last month and the month before.
We hadn't gotten to that yet.
It needs to be added to...
Right. Okay, the additional items that I have here, of course, are the... Are you talking about the minutes? Or are you talking about the add-on for the... Okay. All right, we'll be adding items on for the closed session under General Statute 143, 31811. A is attorney-client privilege to discuss Veach versus the City of Hamlet. A5 to discuss a real estate acquisition. And A6 to discuss personnel matter.
I rescind my motion and make a motion to include this addendum to the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have before you now September the 9th, 2014, regular meeting and closed session, and also minutes from November the 10th of 2014, regular meeting and closed session. Are there any changes, or additions, or deletions that need to be made to those minutes?
We actually can't vote on those. Two signatures not on that one.
Okay, we need to page this in.
And then there's one, two on this one as well.
This is the time, I mean, you want me to... You want to make this motion at the end of the meeting and let me peruse these as we go, because if I initial them now, I hadn't read them. And I'm not going to do that on TV live.
Okay.
I'm going to read these minutes, you know, throughout as we go. I don't see me...
All right, we'll just postpone that until we get down to the end of the meeting. He'll remind me and make sure I take care of that. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this time, we'll go over... We'll skip over item four and take it up toward the end of the meeting. This time, item five is comments from attendees. If we have anyone here tonight that wants to make a comment for anything that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come forward and give us your ideas and thoughts. Okay, if not, we'll close comments from attendees. Item number six, under new business, we have Mr. Ken Anderson with us tonight to present the... Our audit. Mr. Anderson, thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm sure you probably recall, I print out these little two-page summaries, and this is what I want to go over with the highlights. Does everyone have a copy? Do y'all need a copy? Okay, we're good? All right. Okay, the first... At the top of the page about... We're talking about fund balance here. And of course, the city here has two major funds, the general fund and the water sewer fund. And you can see the... This is unassigned fund balance. It used to be called unrestricted fund balance. You can see the last six years of history for that. The water sewer fund, of course, has grown continually throughout the years. The general fund, the last several years, has been in a slight decline. One thing I would make note to you, the percentages... There is a minimum percentage that the local government commission mandates. It's eight percent. That's eight percent of undesignated or unassigned fund balance divided into general fund expenditures. While you're still in real good shape right now, thirty-six percent, which is four and a half times the eight percent, you can see that in the last three years, there's been a six and a half percent drop in that. So something you might want to, when you go to your budget here in a few months, you might want to, you know, take that into consideration, because, you know, sometimes, once you get into the decline, it can continue to go. So we just need to watch that. But right now, you're in good shape. Below that, you have the tax collections. And of course, the city is responsible for the middle collections, which is property tax. And you can see that by and large, the collection percentage has been pretty consistent. You're right around ninety-six percent, really, about all those years. I think the state average is around ninety-six percent also. So you're in pretty good shape. Now, the one that's noticeable there is the vehicle tax. And what occurred with that is started first of year, Department of Motor Vehicles started collecting that tax. So as you can see, the average rate below that's probably high seventies. Now we're up to ninety-four percent. And this has pretty much been the case with all municipalities. If you will flip the page. And this right here will reference the actual report itself. On page one, it's the independent auditor's report. You receive what's called an unmodified opinion. We used to call it unqualified opinion. That's in essence, a good audit report. Page seventeen, you have the general fund. You actually had revenue exceeded expenditures. In essence, that's an increase in that fund, forty-four thousand, two sixty-six. Then the other major fund on page nineteen, this is the water sewer fund. You also... In this case, you actually had a decline. Expenditures exceeded revenues by a hundred eighty-nine thousand. I would say that the main component of that decline was depreciation expense. Depreciation expense was five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, which is a non-cash expense. So it can make these numbers look a little skewed. Nevertheless, it's a decline, but it's not from a cash basis, it's not a decline. I don't want to go too far with that. Item four on page forty, this is the long-term debt. First category governmental activities, which is the general fund. You can see you started the year with about one and three-quarters million. You ended up the year with slightly over two-point-one million dollars. That increase... A lot of that increase was due to other post-employment benefits, which is additional healthcare benefits. When someone retires, you still have a retirement you're obligated to pay beyond their term of employment. That increased three-hundred-three thousand dollars of the increase. Pension obligation, which is police separation. There's also a liability that has to be recorded for that. That increased about nineteen thousand dollars. The only piece of debt that you had as far as real debt was some vehicles that you purchased. That was about a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars for that. And then the business-type activity, the water sewer debt, that was a slight decrease in there, about seven thousand dollars. There was actually no new debt there. The increase of that was really due to... Or even though it was a decrease, it would have been a... Even though it was a decrease, it would have been a substantial decrease, had it not been for OPEB, other post-employment benefits. That increased a hundred fifty-eight thousand. And I think vacation expense was flat. So you actually would have had a decline of about a hundred sixty-five thousand. The fifth item on page twenty-nine, there were... There were two budget over expenditures, both of them in the general fund. One was public safety. The other was debt service. You know, they're statutory violations. You just need to keep up with that a little bit better in the future. There were no compliance audits. That's single audits. A lot of times, you have a Powell Bill audit, or you have a community development block grant. A lot of times, those are grants that towns receive. There was none of that type of money, or not subject to single audit this year. So we had none of that. The report itself has been submitted to local government commission, has been approved. That's about all I have as far as the work itself. You know, Jill, I think is doing a very good job providing the information, good time. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be more happy to try to answer them.
Anyone on council have questions for Mr. Anderson?
I'd like to thank you for the fine job. I hadn't been on council in several years, but it's a great presentation of our financial status. I have one question that doesn't pertain to what you did, and I don't want to put you on the spot. I think me and you talked a while back when I was on council before about the practice of charging an admission at our sporting events, for juvenile or youth sporting events. Any ideas how we need to address that, to where we're in guidelines as far as taking in money, not giving out tickets?
Well, anytime you get into that situation, where you're talking about a dollar here, a dollar there, it's always a cost benefit. Years ago, when you brought this up to me, I got with Marshall right after that. And we ran the numbers along with Mitch. And we looked at the numbers in regards to additional personnel it would take to... In essence, you've got one person there, what are you going to have, somebody looking over their back? What's the cost of that? I think at that time, we decided that the system was... Considering the amount of money you're talking about, we went through... We just laid it all out and we decided...
So you think we're good with that?
I think you're fine. You know, most municipalities don't charge admission. There's always going to be that risk. But what's the cost benefit of having two people stand there, three people? You know, two people can take just as easily as one can take. You know, at some point...
Well, it's not the issue of anybody taking, it's just the issue of keeping it in line. So you'll know exactly what you had.
What we do is, to give you an idea, what we do is, we analytically compare the revenues from year to year. So when we look at, say, the soccer program, or the baseball program, any of these programs, if last year it generated twenty thousand dollars worth of revenue, we suspect it's going to be somewhere around that amount this year. Same with the expenditures. So we analytically compare these numbers. If they were to be very significantly, then we would delve a little bit farther. You know, my experience has been the numbers have all been... Throughout the years, have been pretty consistent. I haven't seen...
Just as long as you feel comfortable with us being in compliance with...
There's no perfect system unless you want to... There again, it's a cost benefit. Everything's a cost benefit. Do you want to have more people to the cost of... Associated with these fees? I think, overall, I think you're fine.
Okay. Good deal, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Anderson, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
We appreciate what you do. You do a fine job for us.
Thank you.
Hope you have a good Christmas.
You too.
Item number seven is, at this time, we'll recognize Mr. Robert Singletary, who wishes to present plaques to the City of Hamlet.
I've got three plaques I want to represent to y'all. Hamlet City Council. And the Police Department. And the Fire Department.
Looks like you did a lot of work.
Once again, I'll thank you.
Appreciate what you do for us, thank you. Item number eight is surplus property. Adoption Resolution Number 201408, sale of personal property. You should have a copy of that in front of you. The items that are listed on here at this time are a Samsung Galaxy 2, Sonam Armorer, Motorola Milestone, Motorola Quantico, an LG Vantara, Samsung Messenger Touch, Altel Kyocera Passport, and an also Altel Air Card. And that's the only items that are on there at this time. Wish us counsel.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Yeah, what is a Sonam Armorer?
All except the...
Except for the Air Card.
Make a motion that we consider these items surplus.
I have a motion from Mr. McQueen, and a second from Mayor Proten. Any further comments, gentlemen? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, item number eight, adoption of resolution number twenty... I forgot that one. Item number nine, consideration of ABC Board agreement. And you should have a copy of that available to you. We do this, what, every year?
I believe it's... Mr. Mayor, it's every five years.
Every five years, okay.
I feel like we've drafted up a pretty good policy here. The ABC Board is real happy. They've been real pleased. And I kept the agreement to the same terms. And the majority of... The latter part of this agreement just sort of outlines the distribution of revenue. As according to the General Statute's eighteen B-805, that sort of outlines where the distribution of revenue is shared to. We share the revenue with the county, the health department, with law enforcement and ALE officers, as well as what's left with the ABC Board.
I would make a motion that we accept the agreement with the ABC Board after then, for another five-year term. Have a motion on the floor?
I have one question. The five years, is that pretty much standard? Mr. Morpheus, I've asked you. It seemed like a long time.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I didn't... I read over the agreement, didn't have any objection to the time period. I can look into what other jurisdictions are doing, but don't know off the top of my head.
And would Councilman Preston, would you be able to act on this, or would you have a...
Point of clarification, yes, that would...
Go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say that... You can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is just the agreement between the ABC Board and the city. And so a portion of the revenue is shared, goes to the ABC Board. And they use that money to sort of upkeep the building and that sort of thing. The money that would go to law enforcement, to ALE officers, is a whole separate revenue stream.
And that's set by statute. So no matter what we do here, doesn't...
It's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, effectively has no bearing on Councilman Preston one way or the other.
Second, Chief Martin's.
Motion and a second. Are there any other further comments on this? Questions, changes, okay. If...
Correct, to my knowledge.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor. Thank you. Next item of business, item number ten, is approval of tax releases. And there should be a copy that was left on your desk to change. And the total amount of money refunded was eight hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents. And this was pretty much per the county.
This looks like a bunch of errors. Make the motion to approve.
Again, yeah, again, this was... Let me say it again, that this was a number of errors on the part of the state collecting vehicle taxes on vehicles that were not in the city limits of Hamlet. So I guess this will continue for a while till they get it worked out. So I have a motion from Mr. Bowie.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Lewis. Any further word on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a discussion of audio system for the council chambers. And I'll, at this time, ask for comments from city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify the... So per the council's request to sort of research updating our sound system, the city contacted a number of companies, asking them for proposals for work to be done to update our sound system. Each quote included different services, because we did not necessarily specify what we wanted done. We just told them that we wanted to update our system. And so some of these, you know, we didn't specify what the city specifically wanted as far as which, you know, what equipment, what quantity, whether it's wireless versus, you know, hardwired. But, and this is... The prices vary as a result, so we don't have quite an apples-to-apples comparison. If the city council does wish to go ahead and have the sound system updated, that would eventually require a budget amendment. A budget amendment would also need a specific amount, and it would be helpful to get some clarification on what specifically the board would like done, whether or not to go ahead with the project and pursue the staff's recommendation. If the council wishes to wait until the next budget cycle, we would do that as well. I have very limited expertise in IT, and that's why I would entertain Mr. Garner, our IT director, to sort of speak about the quotes and what some of the companies mentioned as far as, you know, what they recommended, as well as what he recommends.
No, what I did when I initially decided to kind of get some quotes together, is I wanted to give you kind of an idea of your high end and your low end. The very lowest one is a completely hardwired system. And it doesn't have quite as high-quality microphones and things like that. So that would be, you know, your low ball. The one in the middle, I believe it's from Music Masters, is a combination of both wired microphones and wireless microphones. The, you know, up here and over here, we would have our wired microphones, and then out here, we would have our wireless. Now, the microphones and equipment on there is pretty high on the top end. The third one, which was from Sand Hills Theater in Southern Pines, it is completely wireless. Now, as far as the quality of microphones, they would be there in your mid-range. And I just didn't really have kind of a direction that we wanted to go, so I tried to give you as much to look at as you thought. Now, you know, if it was up to me, I would say, you know, do your wired mics along here, and then just do wireless around here. I wouldn't recommend trying to, you know, just get through doing, you know, getting cheap microphones and cheap equipment. If we did something like this, I would at least want, you know, mid-range to high-range sort of equipment.
And if there's consensus among the board, staff and myself will sort of work towards that, you know, Zach's recommendation.
Yeah. And, you know, once we kind of get what y'all are thinking about, we can give the people we're getting some quotes from some more information to go on.
I think we need to be sure that we have a set of specifications as to what we want and that all, that everybody gets.
Right. That's the only way it's fair.
I think it should, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think it was a... I thought it was eleven-five was the high end. Yeah, it was something like that. Right.
I think that some of the biggest issues, when we have a lot of people in here, it's when you get outside the door, when it's standing room only, and they can't hear outside. And then you have people that can't, you know, due to illnesses or whatever, that can't make it here, they're having issues hearing it on, you know, on TV.
Right.
So that's kind of... We got to fix both.
And when the air conditioning unit comes on.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe if we can hardwire one up in the ceiling.
Yeah. Now, the idea as far as the speakers would be, you know, generally speaking, some ceiling speakers depending on...
And these Bose, I don't think... I think these are Bose speakers in the ceilings. And I don't know if they work. They do work.
They do work, don't they? Yeah.
Sometimes that'll feed back.
That one right there is pretty much gone.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, most of the people that we... Well, all of the people that I spoke to, they kind of had something in mind so that you guys can hear yourselves talk as well. Some people had some speakers mounted up here, and others had, you know, actual microphone stands with a speaker in it, so...
If you are all comfortable with, you know, maybe, say, a more hardwired system, which would probably be on the lower end cost-wise, we will pursue that. We'll collect additional quotes from these three companies, as well as other companies that may be out there. And sort of get a cost comparison for, you know, the same terms of service.
Everybody considered Rockingham has... Everybody seems to be very well pleased with Rockingham's system, the TV presentation and everything. That might be something you might at least need to look at, compare and see what they got.
Most definitely.
Because it seems to be working very well.
I would love to have their system... I would guess that their system would cost much more to put that in here, but...
Right.
Well, they probably got the Cadillac version, but still, we could see what they got and see how that... How we could adapt something to here. It's a good system.
And I believe... Yeah, and I believe that the gooseneck microphones are very, very popular these days.
Yeah. I feel like they'd be better than the lapels, just...
Well, that's what they have.
You know what you're speaking into. No, the idea would be to, you know, have an extra one or two hardwired in case something goes wrong. Same thing for the wireless mics, in case something goes wrong. You know, if y'all are trying to do a presentation up front, you could have an extra wireless mic, and we could just turn it on when needed.
You just want the people to be able to hear it, no matter the way this, you know...
And just make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah.
It's not fair to the people giving these bids, or one to give us a bid on, Chief said, Cadillac version, and somebody else give us a lower version.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I didn't really know what direction you wanted to go.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I appreciate what you did.
I have a couple of issues. One thing... I have, I have a couple of issues. One thing is, we need to try, I'm a firm believer in doing business in Hamlet or doing business in Richmond County, so we need to try to get some more bids from here in the county if, if possible.
Okay.
We, you know, we have a hard enough time with our businesses here as it is. And, uh, need, need, at least give them a chance. The other thing, gentlemen, is that we're gonna have a number of budget issues that are gonna come up in January, so we're gonna have some tough decisions to make with the budget. So we need to kind of keep these things in mind when we start talking about buying things, where we are and what we gotta look at. Thank you. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Marcus, thank you. At this time, we'll go to item number twelve and look at departmental reports, uh, Chief Knight.
Chief, where are we on the, uh, factory run? What, what, what price? We're gonna have to work on that budget. What?
David stepped on the mic, please.
Good example of why we need it.
Yeah, 'cause we can hear you, but people at home won't, they won't, they won't have no idea what you're saying.
We, um, we had asked for two fifty, uh, in the budget process. We got cut back to two hundred in, in hopes that we could find either a used truck or get a new truck at, at a very reasonable price. Uh, we've, we've gone to the factory, we looked at the trucks, uh, we've got one specked out. Uh, we cut every corner we could to, and still get a, a quality truck. Um, it still holds two thousand gallons of water as, as the one that we are replacing. This, it's got a lot larger pump on it than the one we're replacing, so we're getting a lot better truck than we, than we have now. And it's about two fifteen and a half. We're about fifteen and a half thousand dollars over.
Fifteen over the two hundred, that was...
Yeah. I've talked to Jill about the money and, uh, uh, and the city manager also. Since this is gonna be a loan, from my understanding, I'm talking for Jill now, but from my understanding, um, the, the money will be borrowed and will come in and then, you know, back out and, and keep the budget clear. But there's a payment also in, uh, our budget for this year for the, uh, first annual payment. The additional money is that will, the truck will cost, say if it's sixteen thousand dollars additional, all we gotta come up with every year, i- if it's a five-year loan, is just divide that by five or six years. Three thousand dollars. So that would be the additional overrunage this year if we were to go ahead and get on, on the process. It would be whatever the difference in the payment would be in borrowing that amount of money. It wouldn't, we had to come up with the whole entire fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars.
So the only thing that's gonna affect the budget with the overage, and we knew there was gonna be overage whenever we talked about this.
Yeah, we were gonna be trying to try to find one.
We knew we wasn't gonna make it at, at two hundred. Jill, how hard, difficult would it be to locate three thousand dollars that we would need for this year's portion of the payment? Don't get the new leaf machine now. I'm afraid if we don't go ahead and do something, we're not gonna...
This is something we ran into last time and we ended up with a hundred and forty thousand dollars to stretch into another budget because we let it go out too far. And then we went into the next year's budget and we ended up a hundred and forty thousand dollars in there. And this is something that we talked about a few months ago and said we needed to start looking into, we need to get it done. I don't wanna continue to say we're gonna get it done, we're gonna get it done, and then we're gonna flow three more months and then we're gonna be in next year's budget again with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar truck.
The specs I got, um, from the company is a hundred and eighty day turnaround. Uh, and they, they assured us if we turned it in in, in December, that we would get the truck in by, by June thirtieth.
See, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I thought I told, uh, David that we want...
My, my issue with it, if, if, if we wait and, and not do something, that the next one you find is not gonna be two fifteen, it's gonna be two twenty-five, two thirty. Tell us again what truck you're replacing, the specs on the truck being replaced.
The truck that we're replacing was a, um, truck that was built at the fire station back in nineteen eighty-three. It's a nineteen seventy-two model truck.
Let me stop you. Who built the truck?
The men at the fire department. Uh, and we got like eighteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars in the, in the, in the build of the truck over a six or seven-month project. The truck had, um, hundreds of thousands of miles when it was, when it was built. It was a over-the-road truck that hauled milk across country. And we put a tank on it and, um, the older guys that are retired from the fire station now, Gene Ross, Stan Gardner, those folks, uh, did a lot of the fabrication and built the truck, um, back in nineteen eighty-three. It's a two thousand gallons of water. The problem is it's only got a four hundred gallon a minute pump on it. So when we take the fire truck anywhere in the city limits or outside the city limits, we get, we don't get any credit for the insurance rating because it's not, it's not certified because of the size of the pump. It's got to have at least a seven hundred and fifty gallon a minute pump to get credit to take it to a fire. Plus, it's the road miles on it, um, the brakes, I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's worn out. It's forty, over forty-plus years old.
Didn't we, uh, have an issue here lately with the braking on that and we nearly wrecked with it?
Yes, sir.
I'm ready to go ahead and make this happen. I mean, it's not, whenever we were talking about it, mentioning two fifty, everybody, everybody knew we probably couldn't go that high, but we, you said you would look around the two hundred range and everybody up here agreed that we'd get close, um...
We were hoping to find a, you know, a, a good used one, you know, with maybe, you know, a few miles on it, you know, a used one.
This is a new truck.
No, this one you're talking about.
This was brand new, uh, so two thousand fourteen Kenworth, um, brand-new truck.
I think we need to go ahead and...
We're gonna get one no cheaper than that.
I mean, we're not gonna, we're gonna put it off.
Six months now we've been looking for used.
We've looked a lot, yes, sir.
We've looked a lot.
And you've already gotten several different used items and found good prices on them.
The, the problem was, we, we, we ended up finding out that, um, it was hard to find one that was less than ten years old. So they're gonna be between ten and twenty years old if you found a used one, and I just won't, comfortable with doing that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out about what it would cost us if we took that truck, rented it rear into somebody because of brakes.
Is that...
Just wondering if it's gonna be more than two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
It's been wrecked before because of that. We know about that.
Would there be any value in selling that truck to try to get some, some money back on those?
I do have, I do have some issues to talk about with, with it, um, if, you know, as, as the time goes on in the next month's budget, uh, meeting, I would like to discuss the truck and, and some options that we feel that we do have.
I'd like to authorize and let's go ahead and...
Make a motion.
Would I need to make a motion or could we do that on consensus, Mayor?
Uh, no, that's gonna have to be a motion. We've got to have a, uh, we've got to have a budget amendment, don't we?
We made one amendment for the two hundred thousand, so we would have to make an amendment for the additional fifteen or three.
Will we, would it be three or would it be fifteen? How would that work, Jill?
Well, we can go ahead and approve it, is that right?
So you're talking about three thousand, yeah.
'Cause, I mean, this is not like something that just popped up tonight. I mean, this was already discussed and brought up and we've been, we've been talking about this.
If we authorize them to do it now, we're not gonna get it to June. If we wait, if we wait, we're not gonna get one for...
Chief, did they say that they could, 'cause, 'cause we have to have, I mean, you know, they're working on timeframes. I mean, is there any kind of expeditions, can they do it?
Yeah, when we were down there, we went there three weeks ago and did all this work and they had another fire department that was actually ordering four trucks at that time. And we were trying to get hours in before those four, four trucks came in. And he told us that, uh, if we could get it in between the next two or three weeks, he would assure us that hours would be complete by June, uh, budget time and he would put it in front of the next, those, those four, and that.
There's a, there's a payment budgeted for this calendar year. It's just the three thousand. We, we, we need to make this happen.
Make a motion.
This is a... I make a motion that, yeah, I make a motion that we would allow the chief to go ahead with the purchase of this truck and we'll come back and make a budget amendment for the three thousand dollars, uh, over the five-year period. I just feel like if we don't do this, Chief, that, that, that your guys are not having the equipment they need. They're not, um, driving the safe truck. Um, somebody's house catches on fire, that truck's gonna get there. I would assume there's some warranty there. I would think, I don't know, but I would think that any warranty work would save us on keeping up a forty-some-year-old truck. Uh, and we're not gonna find a truck any cheaper than this. And I wanna commend you for such diligence to go out and find this truck for us.
Yeah, we did, we did, you know, the, as an example, the last one we bought in two thousand and five was three hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we went from three sixty-five to two fifteen or, and I want to, I'll also add that I don't have the figures in front of me. So I'm, I'm saying two fifteen, you know, it could be two fifteen, three hundred dollars. I, I don't remember the exact number, so...
Well, no, I mean, you don't let the numbers off your head.
I don't have them in front of me, but, uh, but we have scaled back, um, and we, we get in a rural truck that we can take in a rural area. They can also go into city limits. They can tie to fire hydrants. It's got a large pump on it. It's got, um, it's gonna have enough cabinetry that we can get the truck certified with all the equipment that we need to carry. Um, so I, I think we'll be okay with it. I've read the reviews of the company that's gonna build it. Talked to other fire departments. There's probably six of them in Moore County that, uh, different departments have in Moore County that this, this company has built, uh, there in Moore County. So we, we've had good reviews of it, uh, no issues, good warranty work if there was any warranty to do, so, um, we are comfortable with it.
All right, Mr. McQueen's ma- made a motion. I'll second it.
Chief, can I, can I just have you share the importance of the truck for the community? The importance, what's the importance of this truck to the community?
Dependability is the main thing. Uh, to be able to go and, and get to the areas that we need to get to with the amount of water that, that the truck that we're replacing, we were trying to come up with something very close or very similar to what we had. And, and that was chosen, that became a problem because of the amount of water that we wanted to carry. Um, and that drove the price up and the chassis and, uh, because of the, the weight and the weight limits and things like that. So, um, then it's very important for us to get this vehicle and get it out in the community, in the rural areas, to, to go ahead and be effective in our firefighting.
And this also gives us points, so would that help our insurance rates and...
Absolutely, will help that, um, anytime that truck we got right now goes out to a fire, it, it's just like, it's haul, it's hauling water, it's not a fire truck.
We'll save water and...
It's a water tender is what it is.
Okay, I got a motion from Mr. McQueen. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, second from Eddie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Chief. And, uh, while we're in that vein, I am going to get, uh, Mr. Stubbs to come up to the microphone and he and the city manager need to talk to us about the burn, the machine, leaf machine that burned and what we're gonna be doing about that.
Yes, sir, Mister Mayor. I, I prepared to discuss that in, in my manager's report, but I, I also would like to, I would be, I'd welcome Mister Stubbs' comments as well.
You can tell us what happened.
Okay, on our, uh, older leaf machine, which is, uh, twenty-one years old, it's a nineteen ninety-three model, uh, the starter shorted out on it. And in the process of trying to put it out, it just, the fire got away, completely destroyed the engine and the wiring, uh, part of the machine. Uh, I contacted ODB, which is Old Dominion Brush Company, about repair parts. The machine's twenty-one years old. That's not an option as far as, uh, getting the parts for it. In the process of, uh, talking to him, he gave me some prices on a, uh, new machine, uh, along with, uh, Amic Equipment. Actually got three quotes and, uh, he gave us a, a price of forty, forty-three thousand dollars. Uh, Amic Equipment gave us a price of sixty-five thousand and also, uh, Extreme, uh, was forty thousand. Uh, the Extreme was, uh, underpowered. It would not work for what we needed for. And, uh, we actually went on and put in a, uh, a purchase with, uh, ODB to actually purchase another leaf machine.
On top of everything else, uh, I looked at it down there and the inside of the hopper was full of holes.
Yeah.
Where the sand had eaten away the side of the hopper.
The bed, the bed had, uh, multiple rust holes where it's actually, the age of it is twenty-one years old and, you know, you get wet material in there and you can't clean it, but it's so good, in twenty-one years, it's just, the machine has just wore out. We've actually put two motors on that, uh, that leaf machine, so it's, it's served its purpose.
Oh, it's the other one that we have?
Uh, the other one is a two thousand and seven.
Yeah, a little better.
Yep.
Uh, I guess the main thing is we just need to ask everybody, citizens, to bear with us because we're gonna be a little slower getting the leaves up until we get this resolved.
Uh, yeah.
And, uh, I noticed that we've got some guys out there working real hard with pitchforks right now, picking up leaves, so it's, uh, it's tough.
We do and, um, usually we try to give everybody a pickup a week. When the machine went down as of last week, I actually let them start back on the routes to try to get a, a jump on it for the following week. That'll hold us a few days at, you know, at most, but, you know, time we pick it up, they're putting the stuff back out there. So we're, you know, we're doing all we can do to try to keep up with it. And, uh, you know, we're looking probably about the middle of January before we actually get the, the, uh, new machine in, so I'm hoping we won't be that far behind before the new one gets here.
And we ended up getting some money insurance.
He's gonna tell us about that in a little bit.
Billy, I know on this, the older machines, we were having to replace impellers and housings and stuff like that. Did they make a concession on these new machines to solve some of that issue or...
No, there's, there's nothing you can do. Uh, the sand's just gonna eat it up. We've actually purchased the, the Impella and liner and had them rhino lined to try to save on them. And there's nothing you can do, you know, you, you prolong it maybe a month, but there's nothing you can do to actually keep the, you know, the sand from eating them up.
You have anything else for us tonight, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, I'm gonna give, um, our holiday garbage schedule while I'm up here. City office is gonna be closed the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. I have, uh, got with my garbage guys, we're gonna come in the twenty-sixth and pick up, uh, December twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday, and the twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday, on that Friday. Uh, I'll actually be giving out notes, going door-to-door, putting out notes for the schedule. Also, uh, January first, which is, um, a Thursday, we'll be picking up the second, which will be that fol- that following Friday.
Thank you. Yale, did you have anything for us tonight? Thank you, okay. Zach, anything further? Uh, Jerry? And that's on what date?
Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday, okay.
Is that just football there?
Okay, so let me go over so that everybody will understand that we're ha- right now, we're having basketball registration through the ninth of January and then, uh, late, uh, sign-up will be the twelfth through the sixteenth of January, correct? Yes, please.
You go ahead first.
Oh, man. That's dealing with the follower.
You're right. I mean, that, there's nothing. That, we've been doing it thirteen years and never seen it. You're right, I mean, that, there's nothing, that, we've been doing it thirteen years and never seen it.
And Candace has done more than a lot of paid employees have for a lot of stuff, she's been helping us out at the museum, and we just can't thank you enough for what you've been doing, thank you so much. And Jerry doesn't know the concept of forty-hour week, there is no such thing to him. That's right, yeah.
Jerry, who, who's using the fields at night, um, non-city related, are you aware of anybody, I, I was told that, uh, some folks moved some, uh, soccer goals from South Hamlet down to?
Yeah, that fairground, traveling team, traveling teams, is that what they call them?
Travel.
Yeah, doing a great job with them too. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
He keeps it mowed.
So, they're taking care of the fields now?
It's actually, it's, it's a really good thing because it's feeding, that's, uh, travel teams that's feeding kids from all over the county, that's, uh.
Just want to make sure you're aware of who's down there, don't want anybody down there to damage anything, and.
That's a fact.
Yeah. And also, just all the, the fields and stuff, it's got gates, and I'll make sure the gates stay locked up on those things at night, um, so nobody can get in there and do any damage or whatever.
I went out there about one call on that one closest to the National Armory, National Guard, and you could, you could see it somewhat, but, yeah, they are starting to tear up.
Thank you, Robert Brown, Waterford, yeah, everything's flowing freely up there, okay, appreciate what you do, thank you. And I got a deal here.
Got.
I haven't gotten the police chief yet, I apologize for that, I had, I got the fire chief on my mind and then the leaf machine, I just left you in the lurch. Anybody have questions for?
Uh, just congratulations on your appointment, um, in watching the events going on in our country with police departments, I know that, uh, there's been some money earmarked for body cameras for officers, um, it's not a lot of money, but there, there was some money earmarked through the federal government. You would try to figure out, uh, what avenues we might have to try to get ahold of some of that money, probably be very tough now, probably a lot of folks wanting to get in on that money. Uh, I'm gonna contact, uh, Richard Hudson's office and see if possibly, they may give us a little information on that, but that's something I'd like to see us working on, if you could check on that for us.
Along with that, uh, I've seen a private department, they said, I'm wondering if it's out there, maybe it's the department or how they're saying to use it, because it's not like a traffic camera, I mean, you're gonna have to have proxy cameras that officers have, restroom breaks, meal breaks, things like that, and, and gotta make sure that we don't mandate they wear it, or an eight-hour shift, or a twelve-hour shift, you gotta, and once you put them on, and, 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 and they're, they're on forever, I mean, we're gonna have to start wearing them from now on, so, make sure we've got a policy that can outline when to be used, how to be used, when to deactivate, deactivate, and things like that, because once we cross that threshold and put the cameras on, you can't go for ever again, say, I didn't have my camera, I didn't have it, you've set yourself up for, for, uh, uh, issues before, I think, uh.
It's, it, it's coming, wh- whether you want it or not, it's coming, it can be a good tool, we had, um, you were there, I worked with you whenever the car cameras came out, some of the same issues he talked about was there. You can like it or not like it, but the fact is, it's coming, and if you can check in, maybe getting a sum from some of that money that's out there, maybe getting the first hit off that first release of the money whenever it's gonna come off, um, need to look into it.
Check, uh, the website for North Carolina Chiefs and the North Carolina Association of Police Executives, and I believe there's been some chatter going on there about some policies for a lot of cameras, you might check their websites. Anything else for chief? All right, where have I gotten to, I've gotten now, I believe I'm to GL, if I'm, if I'm correct? Anything, thank you, appreciate you managing our money, you're doing an excellent job, and, uh, city clerk? Our city employees did an excellent job getting everything together down there, and I talked to Doc, I said, uh, I said, if you don't do anything else, Doc, you make sure those lights are gonna come on.
Mm-hmm.
And he got me when I got there, he said, "Mayor, they're gonna come on," okay, but we were real, it was real good to have Ms. Locklear there, and, uh, she had a good time too, so, that's, uh, that's gonna be a real bonus for the city of Hamlet, she's just, uh, exciting person, she's doing a real good job with her athletics, and that's great, and I can, uh, city manager?
Mayor Bayless and city council, I, I first would like to apologize in advance to our citizens as we may likely fall behind on our leaf and limb removal services, as Mr. Stubbs was discussing, this is a key service, and, um, it is a key service that we provide to our citizens, and it, uh, it is unfortunate that it occurred right here at the, at the peak of leaf season. Um, this was the older of our two machines, and it will be an expensive replacement, um, but, uh, with only one of the two, we, we will fall behind to some extent in the interim, and, uh, I just want to apologize in advance and thank citizens for their patience and their understanding. I want to thank Mr. Singletary for the presentation of the plaques, um, I don't think anyone in this room knows, but Mr. Singletary also made me a plaque several weeks ago welcoming me to the job, and I am very thankful for that, and I, um, if you would, please stay when we adjourn, because I want to get my picture taken. We have a handful of events, this is the most wonderful month of the year, um, the Hamlet Christmas Parade is Thursday, December the eleventh, the city offices will close at three P M, thirty minutes before the parade starts, we'll look forward to, uh, seeing the community on Thursday. We have the employee retiree Christmas luncheon on Friday, December the twelfth, the city offices will be closed from eleven A M. until two P M. We would like to apologize for that inconvenience to citizens, every year, Hamlet recognizes and thanks all of its current and retired employees by serving them lunch, and the food is prepared by the fire department, and we are very thankful for that service as well. Our Old Fashioned Christmas is this weekend, uh, it, it will be on Hamlet Avenue on Friday night, the twelfth, both, uh, five-thirty to eight-thirty P M. Um, on Saturday night, five-thirty to eight-thirty P M. on Main Street, December the thirteenth. Hamlet has a goodie day, and it is on Tuesday, December twenty-third, some of the employees bring different foods and snacks during the lunch hour, and it's a good time to just, uh, uh, spend some time together, um, on our lunch breaks before we depart for Christmas. Uh, we will remain open during that time, um, just to reiterate, um, we, uh, we will be closed the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, and we have adjusted our sanitation schedule to prevent from interfering with the holiday, as Mr. Stubbs was, uh, discussing. Just to remind you that our mid-year planning retreat has been moved to review the budget thus far and to make arrangements in planning the budget calendar for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen fiscal year. We will meet here on January fifteenth at four-thirty P M. The hiring process is said to take sixty to ninety days, and I believe it, um, since we last met, uh, the city was able to fill the police chief vacancy, and I would like to welcome Scott Waters in his first city council meeting as the acting police chief. Um, we will fill the museum director and downtown coordinator position by the end of this month, and we will have several others, others to fill in early January, such as the Parks and Recreation Director, um, a ca- two captains, one of investigation and another of patrol, as well as a cemetery groundskeeper and a sanitation collector. I really look forward to this exciting time, uh, to have some fresh faces and new ideas to come to, uh, come to our city, that's all that I have to report, I hope that everyone has a wonderful holiday and ample time to spend with their families and, uh, those of whom who, uh, matter to us most, so, happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Comments for the manager or questions to the manager? That was a very good report.
Very detailed.
We appreciate that, and, uh, I would like to say that, uh, Mr. Abernathy has been very good at keeping us up on what's going on and what's happening, and it's, uh, we have really, it's made life a whole lot easier, and we appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Morpheus, did you have anything for us at this point?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we're going, I need a motion to go into closed session per General Statute one forty-three eighteen eleven A three to discuss matters within the attorney-client privilege, one forty-three three eighteen eleven A four to discuss matters relating to economic development, uh, one forty-three three eighteen eleven to discuss attorney-client privilege in a matter of Veach versus the city of Hamlet, uh, item A five to discuss real estate acquisition, and A six to discuss a personnel matter.
So moved to, you're in a closed session?
Second, Mr. Lewis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, at this time, we'll be going into closed.
Go back and pick up item number four with the document of the minutes of regular meeting and closed session for September the ninth, and the regular closed session meeting at eleven at ten, uh, we need to have a motion for, uh, the, the, the motion and the second, new discussion, all in favor say aye.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, just a couple of things, um, appreciate your work on getting busy on that fire truck, I'm proud to say that that's gonna become a reality, um, it was hard to get that included in our budget with the issues we're facing, but as we've talked before, our infrastructure is, uh, aging, as is most small cities, and hard decisions are gonna have to be made, um, evident by the leaf machine burning up. Ironically enough, fire department's gonna respond to that call with trucks that's forty years old, and it's my commitment on this board, I can't speak for anyone else, it's my, my commitment to make sure our employees have what they need to do the job, especially when it's a safety issue for the town. Moving on, um, would like to thank the Downtown Business Development Association and all their members for all they do for our town, um, Main Street, uh, and Hamlet Avenue, Old Fashioned Christmas coming up, they're, they're putting that on, they're sponsoring that, and I've been out here and talked to some of the folks, and they're doing a lot of hard work. Those folks love this town, and they're putting forth the effort, they're stepping up when other people will not step up, um, also, uh, with, um, that same organization, there was a need for the, uh, Christmas parade to have someone else to organize it and move forward, this group stepped up and did an outstanding job. I'm gonna do something I probably shouldn't do, I'm gonna call out a few people's names, that's really been, um, pivotal and huge in keeping that going for the, uh, Old Fashioned Christmas and the parade, um, Bernice Owens has done an outstanding job on Hamlet Avenue, um, I think she actually purchased a, a, a flag for the city with her own money, um, and she's put forth her own money on Hamlet Avenue a lot. Um, and then, some folks I want to mention for the parade, Ron Mayo, uh, Bobby Singletary, Alan Thangs, um, David Lindsay, Kim Lindsay, they've, they've all stepped up and, and, uh, helped lead the charge to keep the Hamlet Christmas parade, and I'm proud to say that's gonna keep going as long as, uh, as far as the city staff as well for stepping up, I know y'all handed out some information as well, appreciate, you know, all that. I would say I had, um, several folks contact me from as far away as Lumberton, um, inquiring when the Old Fashioned Christmas is gonna be taking place, um, so that made me feel good that some, you know, two or three counties away, these folks are actively looking, um, to come to our town, and hopefully, um, spend a little money here and bring a little, uh, economic impact for us. Um, also during the Christmas season, uh, I would like, you know, encourage everybody to be safe, um, spend locally when you can, if you can, um, spend some of your money with some of these small-town businesses that, um, help offset some of the tax burdens that you as homeowners face, um, I think that's huge, um, that we, that we support these businesses. Look forward to Friday, to the, uh, employee luncheon, um, look forward to that, been my first one in four years, um, get to connect with old friends and see some old friends and some new faces, and, um, really look forward to that, um, something that I think is very special, and to the fire chief, things like everything we do that involves cooking, um, receptions, you always put on a tremendous spread, I'm just gonna throw out, shout out for you on that. Um, other than that, I, I'm proud of where we are, um, agree, disagree, um, I think we've done some good things, done some bad things, we haven't got along all the time, and that's fine, if we set up here and agree with everything, we're not moving forward. I'm proud of where we are, and I hope the city is, uh, on board with, uh, the new faces and moving forward in a positive manner, um, I think that's all, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Lewis?
I have several things, um, first of all, last meeting, I mentioned about the stoplight or the turn lights on Highway one seventy-seven and seventy-four, um, I had a T A C. meeting last month in November, and I talked to a, uh, Chuck Dumas, he's the divisions' operation engineer of Division Eight in Aberdeen, and he sent me an email, and the email says, um, "You asked about the left turn arrow for left turns from U S seventy-four on the N C one seventy-seven, just wanted to give you a quick update, signal materials, additional signal heads, et cetera, have been ordered around the third week of November." The signal plan revision is in design in our Raleigh office. We anticipate signal plans mid to end of December. So the installation will be sometime after the first of the year." Uh, says if he learns of any changes, he'll let us know. So it looks like that is gonna be a reality. So I'm thankful for that. Uh, I'd also like to thank Jerry and all his hard work. And I think it's a great thing you're doing, Jerry, as far as cookout for the volunteers and stuff like that. Uh, I appreciate you doing that. Like to congratulate Scott on his new position. Uh, David, I'm sorry, I heard about your grandfather's passing. I'm sorry to hear about that. We have had you in our prayers and, uh, we will keep you in that. I'd like to thank Zach and Candace. They do a fantastic job. That's, it's another situation where we hired one employee and we got two. So, you know, that was money well spent. I don't know if you don't trust Zach. I won't go there. So, but we appreciate you. We really, really appreciate all your hard work and everything that you've done. Candace, uh, thank you is just not enough, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, I won't be able to make the Christmas parade. We were trying to work things out and different things. I had to be off for a funeral today and just time off work. I'm not gonna make it and I'm sorry about that. But, and like to reiterate what Jesse said, the Business Development Association picked up the parade. Ron Mayo, Bobby Singletary, different ones. Like he said, I hate to start calling names, but Kim Lindsay, David, all of them have done a great job and we appreciate that. Uh, we do wanna keep the parade here in Hamlet. And so we thank all them and their hard work. I had talked to Robert Brown. It's probably been several months ago. And he was supposed to have a meeting with Jim Perry. Uh, did y'all have that meeting? And it was about our infrastructure and different things like that. Can you tell us anything about it? Would you step up to the mic and tell us, please? Or Marcus, was he there also?
Generally, we, we did meet with, uh, Jim Perry and, um, uh, like every other, um, small municipality and large municipality, um, aging water and sewer lines is becoming a, uh, a bigger and bigger issue. And, uh, this is, uh, we're not alone in, in this, uh, this, uh, this problem. But, uh, our water and sewer lines are, are getting older and older, uh, uh, every, every day. And, um, one, what this, what this project, uh, is, is we're, we're, uh, going to map out our water and sewer lines, um, with GIS. So we know exactly where they are. A lot of these old maps, um, are seventy, eighty years old or older. Um, and some of these maps are in people's heads. And we, we have, um, a number of employees who have dedicated more than half of their life to, uh, working, um, with this, with this city. And, um, you know, once they leave, a lot of knowledge will not be able to be transferred unless we get it recorded. Um, and, uh, at, for example, you know, like, case in point, um, mapping our water and sewer lines so we know exactly where they are. That's, uh, it's a really important project and we, uh, will be working on that in the spring.
Because that's, uh, I understand some of our grants is gonna be based on whether we have this information, what the age of our infrastructure is and things like that. So it's a real necessity, something we need. Uh, back to Robert. Thank you, Robert, for getting the water straightened out. Uh, the water, I hadn't heard any issues. We were there for a while. Everybody was complaining about water, but I don't think anybody said thank you for it. And I appreciate that. And my water's fine. I don't have any problems or anything. So I appreciate you getting it straightened out. And, uh, I'd also, uh, didn't know until I got here tonight that Councilman, uh, Martin's wife's been in the hospital. And she's in the hospital even now, so in Charlotte. And we wanna keep her in our prayers. And she's had some extensive surgery, so we will keep her in our prayers also. Hopefully have things.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
Well, I won't mention it, but for the sake of time, I don't have a whole lot to say. Uh, I'm gonna leave here and go straight to Charlotte as soon as I finish the meeting tonight. But we will not meet again until over in January. So I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Bowie?
Um, I, I think everybody's kinda covered everything, so I won't reiterate it all. But, uh, I do wanna congratulate, uh, you again, Chief. I spoke to you last week, but just, you know, again, congratulations. And, uh, we look forward to the, uh, Christmas luncheon on Friday. As mentioned before, Chief Knight, we know that, uh, whatever's put on, it'll be good. So I'm not gonna question how you're gonna do it, what you're gonna do, because it's, it's always good. So. Um, the parade, excited about that. I, I think it was trying to, some works of trying to get us all together in the parade. It just, time schedules and other rides and, and all that, you know, we're not all gonna be together, but we will pretty much all be in the parade. So, um, I do, we're, yes, that's right, we're covered. So we'll be in the parade. But, uh, I look forward to that and do thank all the ones that put that on because, um, that could've been bad if we lost that. It's been many years we've had that parade in City Hamlet. It means a lot. Not just for the people in this room, but the people in the community period. When that rumor got out, phones were ringing, texts were coming in. It was probably the most calls I think I ever received. So that's about all I can say is just have a... Yeah, it just, uh...
I was gonna, I was gonna touch on that in a minute.
Um, I'll, I'll let you. But, uh, but regardless, we, we've got it back and it's gonna stay here in Hamlet. We're not gonna give it up. So, uh, and whatever we gotta do to continue it on, we'll do it. Other than that, you know, I do wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, be safe. Everybody be safe. That's the main thing. Because there are the crazies out there this time of year that, and, uh, we have to just be careful for. And, uh, I really can't think anything else. You know, just make sure you, you know, you're leaving home, you know, don't leave lights plugged up and things like that. I, you know, candles burning, you know, it's the time of year where everybody's doing that. So just kinda keep in mind to turn that stuff off before you leave. Certainly don't want anyone losing their home at this time of the year. Anytime, but this time especially. So that's, that's all I have, Mayor, unless you have?
Uh, thank you. Uh, first off, uh, regarding the left turn traffic signal, the City of Hamlet has been trying for forty years at least that I know of to get that left turn signal in there. And even during all the years of the beach traffic, we couldn't get that left turn signal in there. And now we have. So whatever has been done by our council that has helped do that is greatly graciously appreciated. The, uh, again, thanks to the HBDA and to the Friends of Hamlet. Friends of Hamlet has worked with this issue about the parade also, plus the fact they decorated it at the library. They do that every year. But what happened was back in the, uh, springtime, or right about the summertime, we got a call from, uh, the Rotary. And the Rotary just basically told us, said, "Look, we just don't have enough people to pull this, uh, parade off this year. We're just down." And of course, all of our volunteer organizations are, are really hurting for members. But, uh, we contacted the HBDA people, Ron Mayo, and, uh, they immediately got a meeting together. Uh, several of us went down. Gail and I went to the meeting and, uh, several others went to the meeting and they said, "Hey, I believe we can do this." And of course, we do have to thank Ms. Reeve Adili who was with the Rotary Club for her help. And she has helped direct these people. But we're gonna have really a, just a great parade this year. And it's, I'm so thankful to everybody that pulled together in town for it. I'm also thankful that we now have a manager on board. I am so proud of that fact. I'm proud that we've got a police chief on board now, uh, full-time and that, you know, things are progressing. And of course, the council did not during the period of time that there was so much upheaval, the council did not want to put somebody in place of anything because this is the job of the city manager. And the city manager is the one that had to make these decisions and live with his decisions. So we didn't want to force upon him things that, uh, really were up to him. And we do appreciate the job he's done so far. He's been very informative to the, uh, city council. He keeps us informed as to what's going on. We, uh, again, we hope everybody shows up for the parade on Thursday evening. And I guess the last thing that I really want to say is, this has been a rocky year for this council. Uh, I didn't expect at the time that I took over as mayor that, that all this was gonna happen. But so many things have happened this year. And although people disagree and which everybody has a right to do it, the council has really come together to make the city operate. And I cannot thank them enough for what they've done. I'm looking forward to next year and I, I believe we're gonna have a better year than we had this year and things are really progressing. Our thanks to the city employees. You see them out here on the street, please stop and tell them thank you. Because they don't, the politics doesn't bother them. They just work their heart out. And, uh, we really do appreciate that. So Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year. And if you need me, call me. I'm, I'm available.
I'm glad to that. There you talk about city employees. Um, it takes a lot for a man to hang off the side of a truck running thirty-five miles per hour, twenty miles per hour, and it's, you know, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four degrees outside and it's raining. So, you know, I say that because I was going down the road the other day. And it wasn't in the thirties, but it was probably pushing forty. And, you know, I see two men hanging off the back of a truck, rain suits, going down the road to pick up trash. I mean, that's a, that's a job, people. And, you know, so when you do see them, I've tried to catch them now. Just tell them, you know, thank you for what you do. I mean, that, that's, that's a tough job. I don't care who you are.
And one other thing, please shop Hamlet. If you don't do anything else, go around and visit with the merchants. Uh, I've been going around town this past couple of weeks just visiting with all of the merchants and telling them how much we appreciate them being in town. And if you can do that, that's a great big help. Anyone else have anything? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And thanks again for everybody that came tonight. We're always glad to see you.